And after the pledge, we are going to have a brief moment of silence for our, one of our bus monitors, Betty Boisenette passed away last week, so we would like to take a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you could just take a moment of silence for Betty Boisenette. Thank you, everyone. All right. If you could do the roll call, please. Linda Avanzato.
Here.
Don Biscardin.
Here.
Larry Cerisi.
Here.
Cheryl Clarkin.
Here.
Robert Jones.
Here.
William Munch.
Here.
Kimberly Page.
Here.
Julia Hald.
Here.
Chelsea Campbell.
Here.
Thank you. Irene, if you could call the calendars, please. Monday, October 14th, Columbus Day, schools and offices closed. Wednesday, October 16th, 3:00 p.m., Facility Subcommittee Meeting, Central Administration Building. Tuesday, October 22nd, 6:00 p.m., School Committee Tour of Davisville and Quineset, beginning at Davisville. Wednesday, October 23rd, 6:00 p.m., CILAC Meeting, Central Administration Building. Monday, November 11th, Bethany's Day, Schools and Offices Closed. Tuesday, November 12th, 7:00 p.m., School Committee Meeting, North Kingstown High School Cafeteria. Thank you. Thank you. Presentations. Dr. Ogier.
Sure, I'd like to ask Dr. Kenworthy to come on up and talk to us a little bit about where we are with the NEAS process. As you all know, we had a very successful NEAS visit, but the work is not done at this point, and I'm going to let Dr. Kenworthy talk a little bit about where we go from here.
Thank you, Dr. Ogier, and members of the school committee. I did just want to come out tonight and give a brief update. You know, I don't have a lot of information I can get into at this point in time, but as you know, I've been before the committee a few times over the last couple of years as we've been getting ready for the visit, and then just right before our visit, which took place from September 22nd through the 25th. And now, you know, I just want to clarify kind of the timeline and make sure that the public is aware that there is a little bit of lag time before we actually receive the report. So, you know, the visit concluded again from Sunday through Wednesday. Sunday was a great day here when we had the kickoff and our opening presentation, and then, you know, the team's real first visit to the school, and they did go through some meetings, and then we finished up with the reception in the cafeteria on Sunday afternoon. Then the Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, the team was here in the school going through their protocols and the various meetings they needed to attend and so forth. And they left us on Wednesday afternoon. They do meet with the faculty and the team and just kind of give some parting words to us, although, again, at that point, they really can't get into too much of what we'll see in the actual report. The report takes a minimum of two months, so at this point, we'd be looking at the earliest at late November, early December, when I should see a draft of the report. At that point, just so, again, everyone's aware of the timeline, I have 10 days. At that point, I'm the only one who should be looking at the report. I have 10 days to look it over. The only thing I can respond to is factual errors. So, for instance, if they got, you know, like the number of students wrong or the name of a program, but anything from going from this point forward, that's the judgment of the team or finding is kind of locked into that report. So, when I do see a copy of it, I'll have that 10-day period to respond to any factual errors, and then from there, it goes back to the NEAS Commission, and then I should get some final word shortly thereafter that I can release the report publicly. So, you know, probably looking at maybe this December, January, that will, you know, get the report released publicly. I'll be able to, at that point, share some of the key findings and so forth. Then the other thing that I think, again, it's good to just clarify so people are aware of, our accreditation status, which is, you know, for these 10-year visits, real kind of a big buildup and everybody's waiting for. The Commission only votes on that twice a year, so I believe it's a November and a March meeting. So, at those meetings, that's when they're taking kind of the summary findings of each of those reports that's produced for the schools. So, if you follow that timeline out, you know, we'd probably be looking at the March Meeting of the Commission of when we would actually see our accreditation status, which, you know, based on the feedback that I have so far, again, I don't think we have concerns there. We will receive a report that will have some recommendations, and we will be expected to put a plan together to address those recommendations. You know, so we'll be ready to do that. The timeline from there, again, talks of a two-year official report that we have to produce, that, okay, we take those recommendations, and this is what we're going to do moving forward. And then we'll have a five-year report as well. So, those are kind of the major milestones. Really, the last thing that I would just point out and clarify is that, you know, the visit gets a lot of attention, and obviously, there's a lot of preparation and a lot of buildup to it, and rightly so. But, you know, NEAS is an ongoing process, so we're continually, you know, kind of held to those NEAS standards throughout the entire 10-year period when we go through that process leading up to a visit and directly after. You know, so that is something that I, you know, I know that you're all aware of, but also, when I'm working with Dr. Ogier through the budget process and things, I do have to be very careful that we're, you know, we're holding true within the NEAS guidelines. You know, we could be well removed from this kind of visit time period, and, you know, there are certain guidelines that we need to make sure that we're holding to. You know, a good example would be in our media center. You know, we went through some cuts a few years ago, again, as we did in a lot of areas and had to respond to, but, you know, the key there is we have to make sure that that media center is open for students, obviously during the school day, but also before and after school, and I have to be able to show that. So, you know, we're probably running at a minimum, minimal staff level there at this point in time in order to keep that operating, you know, and that would be one example that we just have to make sure at any point in the timeline that we're holding true to that. I do have an annual report that I have to do, you know, it's an online report, but again, I just have to verify as the principal that we're holding to those kind of minimal expectations in areas such as that. So, that's the generally information I wanted to share tonight. I don't know if there's any additional questions on that or the timeline moving forward.
Are there any questions in the process? Mrs. Avanzato.
No, not a question. I just wanted to say thank you for all your efforts and to the team. You know, not that many years ago, we were really concerned about where the high school was and in this process of all sorts of things, graduation requirements, and I feel like we've really come charging out under your leadership in the high school. So, I've heard from a couple of parents that came to Open House and that have been in, and they're just, they couldn't be happier, so I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you. The best.
Yeah, I'd just like to echo what Ms. Avanzato said. I just have a question also, Dr. Kenworthy. You made a point that you stressed that you could only refuse factual items in the report. Were you ever given an opportunity to, before this report, I mean, were you ever be able to talk about some of their findings before they put it in their final report? That was never an option? Just curious.
Not really. That's kind of how the process works. So, we have to do the best job that we can, you know, obviously our self-study, but during the visit, making sure that the team has the most up-to-date information and, you know, you know, that's through the various meetings taking place. I mean, I, you know, as the principal, obviously, I probably met with every team member at one point in time about some question they had or something. I would meet with the chair twice a day, every day throughout the visit, so, you know, really trying to use that time to make sure I was clarifying any information that it looked like still needed some clarity.
Okay, so you were able to, if they had questions, you were able to clarify them beforehand?
Yeah, definitely, you know, based on their questions. I don't know exactly how that's going to translate into their findings.
Okay. No, I know you worked real hard, and it's, I very much appreciate the extra hours and the time that you put in. Maybe you can get a good night's sleep now when it's all over.
Well, sure. I meant my three-year-old has probably more to do with that at this point than anything.
I, too, will say that I thought the process went very well. Dr. Kenworthy, and just a little bit of time that I worked here with the teachers who were very involved with it, I was impressed with what they had done, so thank you.
Yeah, I want to take a moment to really thank Dr. Kenworthy for his leadership. This is a long process, and a lot goes into it, and it's not like the entire community is all that excited about one more NEAS meeting to get ready for during, in the place of a faculty meeting. It's a lot of work, and he and the high school staff are to be commended. You know, while it's not a major public statement before they leave, the NEAS chair reports out to the faculty in this room, and Dr. Humbert and myself were able to attend and listen to his comments. And one thing that really struck me was, you know, right up front, he said that this is a very respectful place, that the kids respect the adults and the kids respect one another, and you could just feel that. And they, you know, they have three days here, they just, that was the biggest, most profound thing that they found, and, you know, a lot of other wonderful things about the school. But that really impressed me, and has a lot to do with your leadership, and I appreciate that.
It was, you know, a great community effort all around. The staff here worked very hard. The students, you know, have been great.
All right. If there's any further questions, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Dr. Humbert, you're up next.
While Dr. Humbert gets himself a lozenge right now.
Yes.
Dr. Ogier, while we're fooling around with that, could I make a recommendation that, in fact, we put up a screen or something up there for us in the future to give me pull-down or something? It could make it a little bit easier for the presenter as well as us to see.
I can work on that. I always wanted to do something a little bit different with the ability, our ability to make these kinds of presentations in this room without having to resort to the back panel. You know, that's not that easy to do either, so I'll work on something.
Well, good evening, everyone. The task tonight is to look at the Kneecap Science Results. This is based on the test that was taken last spring, and the test is taken in four grades, so I'm going to provide a little bit of background information for you on the first slide. So, there were 31,956 Rhode Island public students that were assessed in May of last year in grades four, eight, and 11. So, it's one grade at each level, elementary, middle, and high school. And the test assesses the content and skills students have learned through the end of the tested grade. This is kind of important because the test material covers from K through four, then from five through eight, and then from nine through 11. So, that's a lot of material that is covered, the span of the content. And then the last thing is that it consists of multiple choice, constructive response, and an inquiry task, and that is on earth and space science, physical science, and life sciences. So, there are three sessions that the kids take. Sessions one and two have the constructive response and the multiple choice, and session three is an inquiry-based task, and that can either be an experiment or a data, use of data, manipulation of data. So, the state and North Kingstown results are there before you for the last three years, and you can see that the state has gone from 32% in 2011 to 35% in 2012, and then 34% this year. So, they've gone down basically statewide in all levels, just one percentage point. Different story, though, for us here in North Kingstown, I'm happy to report. Our trend goes from 2011 at almost 48% up to 42%, and then up to 53%. So, that's our overall district results. And at the grade level, for grade four, we have nice, consistent growth going on, 62% to 63%, and then 64% over the last three years. For grade eight, 57%, then a little dip down to 54, and now back up to 57%. So, that would be all of our grade eight students across the district. And then for grade 11, we started at 30% just three years ago, went to 41%, and maintained the 41%. And that's good news for us because we know that the state had different results. If you look below the chart, you'll see that we only had, the state only has statistically significant increases in grade eight. So, the middle level showed the increase, but we actually had significant decreases in grade four and grade 11 statewide. So, the fact that we were able to increase both at the elementary level and at the high school, well, maintain at the high school level, was good news for us. Another interesting thing that I wanted to share with you is that the state, in the state results, the report that came out, they said that one of the things that they noticed happening was that a lot of the clustering, instead of being on the low end of the proficiency rating, the, there was a lot of clustering at the upper end of the partial proficiency. So, that's where the shift occurred, and that's what's affecting a lot of the rates. For our school-level data, five of our eight schools maintained or increased in levels of proficiency. We had two significant increases. Stony Lane Elementary School had a 10% gain in their proficiency scores, and Quineset Elementary, we are really celebrating with Quineset going up 20% in their proficiency increase. So, that was an amazing jump, a real, what we call a spike.
I'll say. We have the work for that.
And then I'm going to share a little bit of the, what we suspect might have contributed to that. So, now we have some longitudinal data to look at. This is going back from 2008 to 2013, and we have the overall district results. These results are all results that have statistical significance. Now, that's really important because that's a calculation that doesn't apply. You don't get statistical significance with all of the results. So, there might have been schools that had kind of equal or in the same, the same range as some of ours, but they weren't statistically significant. So, that's, so that is important about this slide here. So, overall, as a district, we have shown a total difference of 16.4% gain from 2008 to 2013, and you see the actual numbers there. And then for Quineset, you see a 25.3% gain, starting way back at 44.4 and up to 69.8. So, that's a considerable jump there. DMS went from 28.6 up to 50.6, so almost a 22% gain. And Wickford Middle School, around 32%, up to 44.4, 32.5% gain. That's, that's pretty, that's a great, a large gain. They're all statistically significant, but that's a large gain right there. And then the high school from 26.4% up to 41.6, so realizing a 15.2% gain. And so, overall, North Kingstown is the sixth highest in the state for K through 12 public schools as far as proficiency overall. And the other thing about the statistically significant increases, they, that you're seeing right there, indicate sustained improvement. When you're going back to 2008, obviously, right through to 2013, it's very important that we've actually sustained that improvement. So, the next steps is the schools, after these results come out, the schools do their own in-depth analysis and actually go through item analysis. They take each of the items that is in the test, the ones that are released to them, so that they can see how many students were able to have correct answers on those items, and then they, that way, they can look to see if there's, if it was a question that might have been misleading, or if it's a gap in instruction that they need to address. So, that will occur. We also have a statistical analysis by URI. URI is involved in facilitating and coordinating our GEMS Net program, and they have asked for our raw data, which I supplied to them. We have a meeting next week, and they will be sharing with us districts that use GEMS Net products, the kits for inquiry-based instruction. They will be taking a look at the aggregated data from those districts and to see if there's a pattern. And so, so far, when they have done that, there has been a pattern. That's why we continue to purchase the GEMS Net and use those kits. Also, now, we have new, the next-generation science standards, which is the NGSS. There are eight states right now that have approved these and accepted them to use in their states. Rhode Island was the first one to approve. And then finally, the integration of the Common Core State Standards. We have Common Core State Standards in ELA and math, and the idea for our science instruction is to integrate as much as possible those things that were required to do in math and those things that were required to do in ELA. So, for example, in ELA, we do a close read of factual information, so nonfiction information. So, it would be important to use a science-based article and do the close read on something that supports the science curriculum. We also do writing in ELA, and the writing that we do in our lab reports strengthens the students' writing, and even the graphic organizers that you use in ELA can and should be used in science to support that. And also text-based evidence, the students are responding in Common Core ELA by citing evidence, and that's exactly the process that they do in science. So, there's a tremendous overlap, and the more that we can capitalize in making the connections between ELA, math, and science, the more successful it will be. And it will also have more meaning for the students, and they'll be able to process meaning that way, and it'll also help us with the, how much we can cover in a school day by using our resources strategically. Okay, so I did meet with the two teachers from Quineset, who are the fourth-grade teachers, and asked them, what's the secret? How did we go up 20, 20 points? Because that is an incredible amount. And so, they handed me a, actually sent me a whole packet. We had a nice conversation about it, but one thing that they did last year, well, one of the things was a close read using a science text. They did a lot of writing, but they also did a double dose of science. They did a project which was called Going Green, and it was all about, you know, using resources, you know, for a clean environment, and they focused it on all the areas, connected it to all the areas that are part of the curriculum. And so, they, I'll just read a little portion of it. They said, "We have committed ourselves to teaching the children the importance of protecting their planet and living a healthy lifestyle by going green. This year-long unit is considered a second dose of science." So, then they go through and explain each of the units that they're going to be doing. And so, the first one is land and water, then it was electrical circuits and motion and design. And so, they had essential questions throughout the unit, like, for example, what effect does recycling have on our land and water? So, they took the recycling theme and they connected it to, you know, the areas that they were covering for the science curriculum. So, there's a real strategic approach to this, and it obviously worked. They also did these other, other things. I told you about responding to texts using like Scholastic News, et cetera, anything that was related to science, they did. They also did a thing called Science in a Bag Program, where the kids brought home materials and worked at home with the, with your parents on an experiment. So, they got practice doing that, and they did the kneecap-released experiments. With this whole project, they had three field trips, too. They went to the Rhode Island Resource Recovery Center. Excuse me. They also went to Casey Farm and participated in the On the Bay Program. And they also went to the Boston Museum of Science. So, that was motivating. In addition to that, I have with me tonight their science notebooks that I would like to just have you look at very briefly. Some of these, some of these are from the students they currently have, and some are from the students they had last year. So, there's not enough for everybody, but you could just thumb through it very quickly.
While Dr. Humbert gets herself a lozenge right now to help with the cough, I'm going to interject one point, and I made this point before. North Kingstown is one of the districts in the state that utilizes the GEMS Net curriculum, and what you're seeing in these notebooks is an example of the writing and science program that's part of GEMS Net. We, we pay for GEMS Net through our district funds, and the, the training piece comes from Title money. Title II money. And once, and the GEMS Net folks from URI, they, year after year, love to do this because it just really shows how well those districts do that utilize that program. And traditionally, year after year, the GEMS Net districts are the highest performing in the state. They've really done a great job of analyzing that test and making sure the curriculum is aligned and they're using all of the best practices. And we have regular training for our staff around the kits that we use. So, it's kit-based, all the supplies are there, there's a lot of writing involved, which is excellent, not only for the science piece, but for the writing piece as well. So, everything seems to come together, and once, once that data is out, it usually takes a month or so for the GEMS Net people to process all the state data, and they get back to us with a PowerPoint. We will forward that on to you to show you what their results are for GEMS Net. I just want to make that point because it is a budget item that comes up to us every year, and it, in my opinion, it's money very well spent.
I'm impressed by the handwriting both these that I've looked at. The handwriting on these kits is fantastic.
The sore point.
Wow.
And there are prompts in, that the students use, so there are, you know, when they cite their evidence, so they have an opening, you know, with their hypothesis, then they have the evidence, and then they have a conclusion, and there are, it's scaffolded so that they begin with, send in starters initially until they internalize the process. So, it's very successful. I am so sorry, I don't know, timing is awful with this. In addition, you have at your places the released items for grades four, five, and released items for grades four, eight, and 11 for last year, and you also have the inquiry tasks for each of those grade levels. So, you might want to just take a look at that just for a minute.
While you drink?
While I drink water. While I drink water.
So Dr. Humbert, when you say released items, these are just some of the sample questions that were on the test, is that what that means?
Exactly. Those were the tests, the tests from last May that you're seeing the results for. So they don't, they don't release everything, but they do release some of the materials.
You're not going to test us on these, are you? Hope not.
I know, I'm hoping you're not going to test me either.
I am hoping not.
And then there was some, a couple of questions that Dr. Jones had, Mr. Jones had asked me to respond to, and so I started just digging into some data a little bit further. And one of the things we were curious about was how the boys and girls did versus each other. And so, do you want to take a guess who did better?
No.
It's science.
Do not.
In science, yeah. So in grade four, the proficiency rate for the males was 62%. For the females in grade four, 66%. And in grade eight, 55% for the males and 58% for the females. So in both cases, 4% greater for the females, but not by much. And then in grade 11, interestingly, the males were at 42% and the females were at 41%.
You're smiling a lot about that, I noticed.
Kristen's taking full credit for that down there.
There's a lot of smiling going on by Dr. Humbert.
And then we actually, I wouldn't normally have done this, but the inquiry came through from Mr. Jones about, just looking at, for example, the changes that occur by isolating like all the students in grade four back in 2008, who took the, who took the test back in 2008. We took one school, and then we followed them through to their middle school and looked at, you know, what were the changes? And so there were about 180 students, and 22 of them did not have scores in both, so they were eliminated. But then there were 15 who went up one level and 13 who went down one level. So they kind of washed each other out. So it was just interesting to follow those through. We do have longitudinal data like that. So when you call up a student in a report, you see their whole history of their kneecaps, everything, science, ELA, math, and writing. That's interesting, too. Does anybody have any questions?
Back on page three, the first handout you had of the assessments?
Uh huh, and the PowerPoint?
Yeah. When we're looking at the 208 to 213 differences in there, though I see a significant difference for the high schools from 26 to 41, but that's really basically a step down, if you may, from what we had for the middle schools. Is there, you know, any relationship there, or have we done any analysis as to see what's happening there?
Well, I think, I think it might be relative to what's happening statewide, and not just in our state, but in the other states, the New England states that take this test. And that is, the performance at the 11th grade is weaker overall than in the middle school.
Now, is that because, and it's merged, my question merged with the next generation or the Common Core standards, is that because they're changing? There was an article on TV a couple of weeks ago about history of something, I don't know, it went back 40, 100 years ago, and they were asking about history. And I don't know if you saw it, it was on one of the TV programs. And nobody can answer it today. It was, you know, it was something that was...
Oh, when, yeah, I saw that with the report cards, and what it measured then, and it was, it was more rigorous than what's happened now.
Yeah, I mean, it was history, but it was, you know, some history that's really probably inconsequential as far as we're looking at today. So my point is, are they changing the, when you say standard, are they changing the standard of what you're expected to learn each year?
Right. Is that, when you're talking about the new generation standards?
Yeah.
Yeah, and the Common Core, that's right. The idea is to go deeper and not as broad. So to narrow what we're covering, so we don't have the breadth that we were covering, and to go deeper into that particular topic or concept.
Somebody's got to hone this field of science into something more specific.
Right. And it's also, it's also very much inquiry-based. So for us, you know, it's going to be very, I think it's going to align to what we're already doing, because we are pretty much inquiry-based through our whole instruction. But not every state, not every state is like that. And not every district is like that either.
Well, certainly the state, the results will ultimately show that, hopefully.
Hopefully.
Just one other comment, I think that, and I, and especially for North Kingstown over the last 10, 11, 12 years, at least 10 years, we've had significant changes in our school populations from a standpoint, you know, we had the first graders way back in 2003, all housed in fishing cove, and we spread them around again, then we closed, we brought them back, we closed Wickford Middle School, you know, and now we've opened, you know, we opened, and we basically went back to the, to a split, if you may, grouping. Now we're back to, you know, kindergarten through so many kids in the same school. And so I think that has to have a significant impact on all of this stuff.
Mr. Jones had asked me that, too. So I spoke with Principal Denette today and asked her if she felt that that had made a difference. And she also alluded to it actually at our Admin Council meeting on Monday, saying that she feels that this fourth graders have now been with her since second grade in this configuration. And she said that it made very much a difference from when she had just fourth and fifth grade, because in fourth and fifth grade, she was getting students from all schools, and you weren't really sure what had been covered. But now, and I have seen her do this, she starts with the second grade, those notebooks that you see, she starts with the second grade notebooks, collects them all, and goes through them. And so if you do that, you know, repeatedly, by the time they get to fourth grade, you pretty much know that where the, you know, that everything's been covered.
Well, I think it's the continuity within the school.
Exactly.
Plus, on top of that, you have your other, you know, the kids have their other brothers and sisters and things like that that may support that academic environment to some degree. And so I think that really plays out. But I think it also, in the past, it might have skewed some of our, some of our data because, you know, we were changing, you know, around all the time, and kids were going left and right.
Right. Well, fortunately, we have a population that's not too transient, you know, some of the other districts really have migration in and out, in and out, in and out, so that, you know, that makes things difficult, too. I think we have relative stability, so that helps. But you're right, the reconfiguration has helped.
I mean, I can recall Quinneset, they were like the number one, you know, 89 years ago or something, you know? And then we started playing, you know, games with the kids moving around from this configuration to the other. And I think that probably skewed the results negatively over the last several years. Hopefully it went in the right direction.
Mrs. Avanzado, I saw your hand up.
Yeah, these results are amazing. So congratulations to everyone involved, Dr. Humbert, Dr. Ojai, all the schools, the teachers, especially Quinneset teachers. Just looking at the gains, it's just pretty amazing. It's like, it's all upwards, basically. I don't see any downward trending. So keep up the good work. Just very quickly, the tying in the disciplines, the way they did, like language arts with science?
Right.
Is just really eye-opening for students, because I remember in law school, we had a professor that said to us, you think this is also separate? Contracts, personal injury, property, civil procedure, it's all the same.
Connected.
And then he taught it as a connected concept, and it was really eye-opening. He was one of the better professors. I also think it's great for kids to have a physical compilation of their work like that, even though they bitterly complain. Looking at the notebooks, you know, they probably don't get them back, but I mean, I know they compile a lot of things like that during their high school and middle school careers, and I think they like having that in their hands, you know? And the one last thing, now we're getting rid of the kneecaps. Here we are, doing so great for the kneecaps. Why, why? Why do they have to keep changing everything when we...
Well, the science kneecap will outlast our ELA and math kneecap. So we change over to the park in the spring of 2015, but the science kneecap will continue, I think until 2019, I think.
As soon as you master something, they switch it up. So congratulations and thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Dr. Humbert. I do know that, I think the students really enjoyed the GEMS Net. I can remember seven years ago, working with the fourth graders as they had to make dams and that sort of thing with the sand. I was the cleanup person, which wasn't fun, but the kids certainly enjoyed the hands-on experience. So thank you for leading us in this effort. All right. Any other comments? That brings us to citizens' comments. There is no sign up? All right. All right, superintendent's report.
Thank you. I just want to make a point that on Monday, we had the honor of awarding Mary Barnes, Guidance Counselor at the high school and 28-year employee of the North Kingstown School Department as the Educational Support Professional of the Year 2013. So congratulations to her. She and Sally LeVake, our Teacher of the Year, will be honored by the school committee at our November 12 meeting. So just wanted to point that out. And also, last night, we were fortunate to, you know, it was a long ride, we had to go to Mount Hope High School where the Board of Regents meeting was. But Stony Lane was recognized by Commissioner Gist last night for their Blue Ribbon Award, and there will be a ceremony in Washington coming up very soon, too, in November. So that was just kind of one step in the process. I just wanted to acknowledge them as well.
Thank you. And if anybody had any wondering what the air horn that we heard earlier was, it's basically there is a girls' soccer game over at the stadium tonight, and they blow the air horn whenever they score. So hopefully...
That's a good sign.
So hopefully it's a good sign. Hopefully La Salle did not score more than we did. They don't blow the air horn for the other team. Okay. That brings us to routine items. And it's specific up to our executive session. Do I have a motion to seal the executive session minutes of October 8, 2013? Still moved? I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed?
Staying.
The motion passes. Lorraine, do we have any disclosure of the executive session votes?
Yes, there was a motion by Linda Avanzado to accept the recommended settlement agreement regarding a student and pay the expenses from fund balance seconded by Cheryl Clarkin. The vote was that the motion passed 5 to 1 with one abstention. Mr. Mudge voting no, and Mr. Cerisi abstaining. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that brings us to our consent agenda. Are there any items to exempt from the consent agenda? Mr. Jones?
I'd like to exempt E. 2, E. 5, and E. 6.
E. 2, let's just say you're exempting all of E. Mr. Mudge?
I did.
Did you say D is involved?
Yep.
Is there anything else? All right, do I have a motion to approve?
Still moved.
C and C. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. All right, Mr. Mudge, that brings us up to D, the musical instruments.
A couple of questions. What happened to the oboe in the purchase order sequence? And I know it was in there. For some reason, it's not on the list, so I was wondering why that wasn't funded. But also, I'm asking again, I didn't see these, this type of equipment purchases in our school budget. And just make a comment on that, I think they should be, and well as any item over $5,000. But most importantly, how come we deleted the oboe and didn't procure it?
First of all, we budgeted $5,000 for musical instruments, and when we went out to bid, the music instructor at the high school was interested in seeing the pricing that we had on these three instruments. She would have liked to have had all of them. It turned out that she chose the French horn and the tuba as being the ones that she desired the most, $5,000 that was budgeted, and Dr. Kenworthy was able to find the other $1,203 from the supply line.
So I can, I could find that in the budget?
Yeah, I would just like, I'd just like to point out that it's listed in the universal, it's Financial Impact Budgeted Universal Chart of Accounts 56101 and 57305.
Thank you. But I don't think you will know them one.
Do I have a motion to approve D? Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Jones, personnel items.
Thank you, Ms. Page.
You can start with two. Which item are you going to start with?
Well, all of E is excluded, so it's the sort of thing, whichever one Mr. Jones wants to speak to first.
Okay.
Thank you. Just questions I have on E. 2, approval of advisors. My only question was, if there are multiple advisors for a single activity, that it's, there's a single cost with that, and it's just split among the multiple advisors?
Yes.
On E. 5, the grant funding crosses fiscal year, so I just want to make sure that there's no issues with that?
No, it was also budgeted as part of the FY14 CRP.
And just on E. 6, just a question, and if it's there, I'm sorry if I missed it, but in the future, can we actually have the degree when we approve these?
Yeah, I apologize, those two were supposed to get added, they did not. So you have one, but not the other two.
Thank you.
Mr. Biscarton?
Very quickly, and I apologize, this is something I could have talked to Ms. King offline, but I've been out of town. The, on, what's it, E. 3 and 4, are those resignations and retirements, are they to be replaced, or are they going to be, are those positions to be replaced, are they going to be, is that, those duties going to be spread amongst existing staff?
I assume it would be replaced.
To be replaced.
It would be a sub until that's replaced.
Because on the, which one is it? Number three, approval of resignations, Financial Impact Savings and Salary, but if you're going to...
Well, because it could be somebody who's had a lower step coming in.
Okay, thank you.
All right, do I have a motion to approve?
I'd like to go through my comments, please.
You still ask, but I'm not looking for a motion.
Second.
The motion is second, Mr. Mudge, you had other questions about E.
Yeah, let's start with the COZI coordinators. I looked at that, and, you know, I'm a little confused at this, because if you look at that, you're asking for retroactive pay to January 1, 2013, which increases the outreach coordinators' pay by $5 an hour from $20 to $25 an hour. Also, you're raising the administrative assistance pay from 16 to $18 an hour, 9% raise, 9% raise, understand that? And then a 25% raise for the coordinator. But I look back, and I'm not sure what the functions are here, but as I look back at some of the other things we have approved, for example, like assistants and things like that, if you were to look at, and again, this is a question, if you were to look at, like for example, teacher's assistance, teacher's assistance, we approved at the last school committee meeting, it was under grant funded, was $24 an hour. Teacher's assistance were $15 an hour. Yet, when we look at, okay, the teacher's assistance, for example, on page 17 of the ... Yet, when we look at, okay, the teachers' assistants, for example, on page 17 of the school committee meeting packet, which was really last week's meeting minutes, I noticed that we're paying teachers' assistants with bachelor's degrees and so forth and so on only $12.86. So, you know, how do we justify paying somebody now $18 an hour as an assistant when, you know, our teachers' assistants within our school district are only getting $12.86 an hour? That's a disparity that I'd like to have some discussion with at some point in time. It just doesn't make sense to me, and you know-
Mr. Mudge, the jobs aren't necessarily the same kinds of jobs. I realize the call administrative assistant and all that. There are different responsibilities. These jobs reflect added responsibilities, and, you know, in a lot of cases here, we're dealing with people who are not getting the same kinds of benefits or anything like that that we're looking at with union employees. So there are a number of differences, if you, you know, I'm not going to go into it, but I mean, if you dig into all of the context of all this, we're getting a really nice deal here. And I've looked at this, Mrs. King has looked at this, and we feel these are appropriate in comparison to the work these types of people in other COZI organizations around the state are doing.
I'd like to amend the motion then.
I called Mr. Cerisi first.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If you look at these, on the agenda or on our package, these people, these employees that are listed under teachers are already teachers in the district. These employees that are listed under teacher assistants are already teacher assistants in the district. This pay per hour that they're receiving is for extra work outside of their normal work hours, and it's paid per hour with no benefits. So, you know, without going into the names and so on and so forth, they already work for the district, they already receive a paycheck and benefits through the district. This is a grant-funded COZI program where they're doing work beyond their work, normal work day in addition to, and being paid through this grant funding, and at hourly rate, not at a salary rate, or not with any benefits included, because it's strictly grant-funded, there's no benefits included. These people already work for the district.
Yeah, I, can I comment on that, please? Just to follow up on that. Larry, I understand that. If you look at page 28 of our meeting last week, you'll see that we approved after-school facilitators for COZI through the 21st Century Benefit, you know, whatever it is, and at Quineset Elementary School, the teachers were getting $24 per hour, and as teachers' assistants were getting 15. You know, so what, now it's going to 18, I guess? Okay, and 25, that's, so I'm just wondering, and again, I don't support the retroactivity of these, back to, back to January 1 of 2013, and a question whether that's appropriate.
I think one of the things that the Family Learning Center is trying to do is, they have a pot of money, and it's not like they're going to get more pot, more money. If anything, they've gotten a little bit less over the years. And so what they're looking at is reorganizing as to how the pot of money gets paid. It's the sort of thing of, the people in the family, Office of Family Learning do not receive any benefits unless it would come out of the grant that they receive. So it's, do they use their pot of money to pay one person for the time they do, or do they pay many people? And they're asking for the pot of money to be paid to one person in a slightly different way. So it's not like it's any different pot than they had before. Avanzato.
Just one question. Has a grievance been filed by anyone based on the supposed disparity related to the management decision in this regard?
No.
Thank you.
Well, are we opening-
There is a motion on the table and a second.
Are we opening up Pandora's Box by making all these retroactive to January 1 of this year?
No.
Why not? I mean, why wouldn't anybody else say that I want to get my increase back to January I can see the start of this fiscal year.
Most of the salaries in the district are union-based, they're contract-based. I don't know what else to tell you. And if they, if someone were to request that, they would go through the process, the same process that this group is going through, through me and my staff, and then through you.
What could I ask? Is this fiscal year 13 or 14 money that's being paid?
Mrs. King already answered that question.
Well, see, I'm not sure I understand the logic. If it's fiscal year 14, why is fiscal year 14 paying for reimbursements for money back to fiscal year 13?
There's money in both years' grants involved here.
The money was budgeted in the FY14 CRP and it was approved by RIDE. Mr. Biscarton.
I respectfully ask the chair to call the question.
Second. All right, so we have a motion to call the question. Lorraine, could you take a roll call vote? Linda Avanzato.
Yes.
John Biscarton.
Yes.
Larry Cerisi. Cheryl Clarkin.
Yes.
Robert Jones.
Yes.
William Mudge.
No.
Kimberly Page.
Yes.
Motion passes, thank you. Six to one. Lorraine, could you call the question?
Well, I still haven't finished, but um-
No, no, the motion was to call the question. So it passed, and now we pass, and so now we call the question.
I thought that was in regards to the previous item specifically.
Call the question, please, Lorraine. John Biscarton.
Yes.
Larry Cerisi.
Yes.
Cheryl Clarkin.
Yes.
Robert Jones.
Yes.
William Mudge.
No.
Kimberly Page.
Yes.
Linda Avanzato.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes, six to one. All right, that concludes the consent agenda. That brings us to new business. And under new business, we have the fund balance. Dr. Ojai and Mrs. King.
I'm going to let Mrs. King talk a little bit about our fund balance number and how we got to that number.
First, I will say that our FY13 surplus is unaudited. We're relatively confident in the number, but it is an unaudited number. So I did note that on your paperwork. Back in about April or May, we were projecting a surplus, but at the same time, we're also projecting that we were going to have some legal settlements that we thought would settle by the end of, that at least could get booked to FY13. That was not the case. So we do still have a couple of legal settlements that are outstanding. Maybe they'll settle, you know, for money and maybe they won't. So that's one of the things that I want to caution as well, that we do have some things that are going to roll over if those should settle. One thing I would say is that I did not prepare your FY13 budget. So when I did start here in May of 2012, we had a little bit of things going on with the town, so I was pretty frugal this year. There were some things that were brought to me by my department heads that I quite frankly said no to, that I, you know, Dr. Ojai and I thought, maybe we just need to hold off because we really wanted to be sure we were going to be. I'm not trying to be critical of the prior business manager, but I wasn't entirely sure what had been budgeted, since I didn't do the budget. So I was nervous about it. The other thing we didn't have is, we didn't have a facility supervisor on staff, and we didn't really have one for, you know, we did have the prior business manager that was acting in that capacity, but we really didn't have a solid facility supervisor score like we have for the past year. So again, there are several items that have come to light, facilities items that we're going to have to take care of immediately. We had sewer issues at the high school. We have an underground storage tank that something is going to have to happen to because it's failed testing. I don't know if we're going to be able to do abandonment in place, which is cheaper than taking it out, but again, you know, so I think you see there are quite a few things that have come to light since we ended our year. So what is taken into account in this estimated fund balance at the end is the most recent things that we had approved. In June, we approved the technology purchase, so those funds are taken into account. Commissioning services, that report is due out relatively soon. The tennis courts from the last meeting, as well as the $600,000 for the alternative learning program upgrades at Davisville Elementary School. We have received the two checks from the trust, the $124,489, which is actually, if you look up above in FY13, that's actually the return of our reserves, the $118,957 gets interest on that. So that kind of washes that out. That's the return of our reserves from when we went from GH, GRI to the trust. And then the special equity distribution that we had talked about last year, I think it was around the April timeframe, we have received both of those checks. And then also where we had used some of the $228,000 from the payroll fund adjustment in, that's actually an out. So I don't know if anybody has any questions. We did do, you know, we did do quite well ending FY13. We had received another special credit from the trust at the end of the year, which was actually from some reorganization issues we had to make in the payroll department. So there were quite a few things that happened right toward the end of the year that we had not expected, including legal settlements.
Mr. Biscarton.
Yeah, thank you, Mrs. Page. I'd just like to address the gradual, consistent, needless draining of our fund balance by attorney's fees. Specifically, fees accrued over the past three or four years due to the frivolous and unending lawsuits by Mr. Mudge's blurred and foggy interpretation of the open meetings laws violation. As of 13, May 13, almost $7,000, $7,000 have been spent defending the school committee against Mr. Mudge's lawsuits. Lawsuits that have been successfully defended by our council, by the way, all of them. None of them have been won by Mr. Mudge. I think it needs to be brought to light that this is $7,000 that could have gone to textbooks, technology, sporting goods, uniforms, anything besides defending lawsuits against a member of our school committee, who obviously has an issue with interpretation of open meetings laws. Thank you.
Can I respond, please?
Yes, Mr. Mudge.
Take a very short view, John, of what has happened in the past. But I have been fiscally trying to make sure that we're spending our school department's money wisely.
And in doing so, you've wasted $7,000.
Excuse me.
You've wasted $7,000 and counting. This is, this is like the, when you go through New York City, you see the big clock, the big ticker rolling over the federal budget deficit. This is what you're doing to us.
All right.
Constantly, you're spending money, you're coming up with things that you, you think there's a grant conspiracy here, that we're all taking money under the table, that we're all misappropriating funds, that everybody's dirty, and you're the only one that's clean. That's what the problem is.
John, you don't know what you're talking about.
Obviously not.
Let's go back and find out. Let's find out, okay? Last administration, $250,000 misspent on federal monies with the school committee. Mrs. Avanzato can attest for that.
That was then, this is now.
Oh, it is, it is. Well, tell me, John, tell me something. We've got $500,000 for school activity funds, and we don't have a policy, nor do we have anybody assigned for those funds.
That's not the issue.
That is, that is the issue.
No, sir, that's not. The issue is you, is you're wasting money of $7,000 for lawsuits.
Let me finally say-
That's not the issue.
I have won 11, I have won 11-
Gentlemen, I'm cutting you off. I have allowed this to go outside of the, what we're supposed to be talking about here. We have the fund balance in front of us, and I'm going to be asking that we stick strictly to the discussion on the fund balance that is in front of us. So. So. All right. Gentlemen, so, do I have somebody else who has a question about the fund balance that we have in front of us? Move on, on the agenda.
Oh, John.
All right, if I don't hear any further questions, that brings us to the end of our agenda. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Meeting adjourned.